It's now seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Seeing and hearing none, the municipality of Central Algen would like to acknowledge that we gather on the land of the McKee Purchase, the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee, the Atawandran, and the Mississauga Nation. Would you read the first motion concerning the minutes, please?
Madam Mayor, motion reads, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Tuesday, May the twenty fourth, and a special meeting of council dated Tuesday, June the seventh, twenty twenty-two be adopted?
Any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, and now we move to delegations and we have our Port Stanley Waterfront Master Plan, the final report. So, Michael, I assume you're the one presenting?
Yes, correct.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. My name is Mike Tucker, I'm a partner with Think Design and I was project lead. And before I get started on behalf of the project team, I just want to say that we really enjoyed this project, we enjoyed working with the community. Of course, as you know, you've got a great waterfront, so wanted to, before I forget, to thank you for the, for the opportunity to work with the community on this. So tonight I have approximately ten to fifteen minute presentation, I'm going to cover the purpose of the study, our approach, what we heard through community engagement, our recommendations, implementation strategy, and then I just have a one slide on summary. So at the end, I would be happy to take any questions on the plan. So the, the purpose of this master plan is to explore and enhance the social, economic, and environmental aspects of the waterfront. Build on the work completed, of course, as part of this harbor secondary plan. We consulted with the community and stakeholders on the type of improvements they would like to see, and develop a roadmap for making improvements to Port Stanley's waterfront, to realize the community's vision. So this is a ten-year master plan, and so as we do with a lot of our master plans, we'd like to point out a few things about master plans just to keep in mind as I'm going through the presentation, so. First, it is an important tool for budgeting purposes, so we have provided estimated costs and a schedule for implementation, of course, that's in the report and I'll cover a bit of that tonight. Second, this plan must be viewed as the living document to be updated and adjusted through the annual budget planning process. Third point, recommendations may be advanced, delayed, amended, to respond to changing circumstances, so this plan does not need to be looked at like a fixed approach. Things will change and this plan will allow for recommendations in their sequence for implementation to be adjusted to address changing priorities or new opportunities as they may arise. At some point, initiatives will require some additional community consultation to arrive at detailed plans and designs. So while we did do a fair amount of consultation as part of this plan, there is still more work to be done that needs to be, you know, the community needs to be engaged as these recommendations are refined and implemented. And then finally, the last point there, council and consultation with municipal staff will determine if, when, and how initiatives are implemented. So because, just because this is something representing isn't the plan, does not mean that things won't or can't change. And the fact that this is a ten-year plan that will spend multiple turns of council should not be considered an issue. So our approach to developing this plan was very focused on engaging with council staff, the public throughout the process. And on that slide, you can see these are the key points of meeting with those groups. So we had interviews with council and staff in December, we had our first public information session, you know, on January twentieth. We then had survey one and feedback on Let's Talk Central Algen, which closed on March first. We then presented design options for feedback and the feedback closed on March twenty eighth. We then had a project update to council on March eleventh, or sorry, April eleventh. Public information session on May twelfth, and then finally we had an online commenting and priority survey, which closed on May twenty fourth. So what we heard based on those engagement sessions, so we've summarized that into the following nine points. And so these are really just the key points, we heard, we got a lot of good feedback, of course. So first point being that available waterfront land is precious and should be used to support activities for all members of the public. Second, we should provide a pedestrian-focused waterfront. While at the same time, we need to provide adequate supply of parking or provide strategies to address parking. Fixed future mixed-use development should front both the water, lake and creek, and the street. And spaces should accommodate a wide range of all student activities. Sixth point there, address climate change, rising lake levels. We heard time and time again that a significant portion of the berm should be naturalized to enhance biodiversity. Number eight, we heard a lot about splash pad, dog off, leash areas, and sports courts. And although they are quite desired in Central Algen, the majority of people felt that they should be accommodated elsewhere in the community. And then the last point, there is interest in exploring a marina facility or marine types of amenities, this could be done in the future. So, based on that community engagement, we conducted our background studies, we did a number of site reviews. And of course, our experience with other waterfront communities in Ontario, we've identified thirty-nine recommendations for the waterfront. And these are both physical infrastructure, construction projects, as well as plans and strategies to assist in realizing the community's vision for the waterfront. And we organized these thirty-nine recommendations into five study areas. And they are the waterfront-wide, we had eight recommendations, West Harbor and Hoffa's Park, six recommendations. We also had six recommendations for Promenade West. And on the other side of the creek, Promenade East, we have five recommendations. And then finally, East Harbor or the berm, of course, as it's referred to, fourteen recommendations. So the first eight recommendations, these apply across the entire waterfront. And these really lay the foundation for future waterfront improvements. And these are primarily designs, plans, and assessments and strategies. And for the most part, any costs for physical improvements that result from these recommendations are to be included in the capital project recommendation. So, for example, one of the recommendations is a programmable lighting strategy. So depending on what comes out of that strategy, the cost for the actual lighting in any specific location like the berm would be included as part of the future berm construction. So as I said, there are eight waterfront-wide recommendations. These include, first one, programmable lighting, another study for signage and refinding strategy, public art strategy, building on the existing site furniture that's been done, so a strategy there. Looking at break wall enhancements, waterfront promenade, urban shoreline, I'll have some details on that one in a moment, and then we have a piece on potential future marina for considerations in regards to that. So I'm not going to go through each recommendation in detail on any section, there's not enough time for that, and of course, it's detailed in the plan. But I, I thought I'd highlight a few just of interest. So in, in this case, urban shoreline, this is a strategy to address rising lake levels due to climate change, enhancing opportunities for public safety and improve access to the water, for people to get closer to the shoreline. So we propose a number of different ways of doing this based on the previous study that was done looking at the rising lake levels. So on this slide here, the top image is showing one option, which is having a lower and an upper promenade. The second image below that is the tiered seating between upper and lower quarters. The top image on this slide showing steps connecting the upper and lower walkways. And then the one at the bottom being large gradual steps to the water. So those are just four options, and the idea being that all four of those could probably be integrated in some way across the waterfront along the, along the promenade, so. So that's where the study would look at, where to implement those and more details on how that would work. There would also need to be periodic ramps between the upper and lower sections to ensure universal accessibility. So that's another detail that would, that's provided. For the second area, we're looking at West Harbor and Hoffa's Park, and so we have six recommendations for this area. And then this includes the MacGashville property, parking enhancement, some improvements to Hoffa's Park, and boat launch enhancements. So the six recommendations are updating existing parking, new public parking at the east end of Main Beach, new event space of Hoffa's Park, crosswalk and other pedestrian safety improvements at Boat Launch, walkway enhancements along the west promenade adjacent to Kettle Creek, and future development as part of the harbor secondary plan area. For Promenade West, so this is the area north of Hoffa's Park and the Boat Launch, we have six recommendations. So this extends from Bridge Street south to the Gashville property along the west side of Kettle Creek. And these are primarily pedestrian and connectivity enhancements along with improvements to the area adjacent to Dominion of Canada Building. So those six recommendations are waterfront gateway, enhanced existing promenade, a new park near the Dominion of Canada Building, extend the sidewalk in a couple of locations. Recommendations surrounding, again, the Dominion of Canada Building and recommendations regarding future development. Now, on the east side of Kettle Creek, we have recommendations focused on pedestrian activity enhancements, so we refer to this as Promenade East. These include some minor improvements to Glover Park, some promenade enhancements, pedestrian connections, separation between harbor activities and the promenade, and recommendations regarding overtopping protection. And last but certainly not least, of course, is the fourteen recommendations for the, for the berm area. And of course, this is the area that has the waterfront that piqued the most interest of the community and we've had a lot of input on. So these recommendations focus on transforming the berm into a new waterfront park with the waterfront promenade around the perimeter. The east half of the proposed design focuses on naturalization, with the west side being more of a traditional manicured park space. And then the south end of Main Street extension is to be a plaza space, providing civic space for events and gatherings. So to realize the berm area into a park, we provided fourteen recommendations, these are organized by area or project. These include the waterfront promenade, walkways, trails, parking, waterfront green on the, on the west side, naturalization on the east side, shoreline naturalization, the waterfront plaza at the end of Main Street, an amphitheater on top of a berm, an activity zone, consists mainly of a children's playground and other amenities associated with Little Beach, lookouts, fishing platforms, exercise stations, and future development recommendations. Now, this cross-section illustrates the proposed shoreline naturalization approach with, with the wetland future along the east side of the berm. So we, we heard a lot about this from the community, interest in having some naturalization of wetlands, so this cross-section shows one possible way of doing that. So with those thirty-nine recommendations, we, we had to come up with the implementation strategy to prioritize when these, these would happen. So first thing we did is we developed a priority scoring matrix to, to help establish a sequence, and we did this based on a set of criteria, which included a range of factors, and we scored each one from zero, five, or ten to help do that initial, initial order. But that's not the only factor that we use, and that's just a way to help sort the long list. We also needed to look at operational versus capital projects, we needed to prioritize recommendations that have some immediate need. Consideration for dependencies and efficiencies between recommendations. We wanted to make sure we have a logical order to implementation, you don't want to be building something or doing something before you've actually completed a study. Of course, budget considerations to help balance spending across each year. We had to consider staff resources to, to implement and manage these projects. And of course, the role does need still to be flexible and address new opportunities and priorities that may arise. So again, we, we provided a one possible scenario, but things, of course, may change. So, of course, each of the thirty-nine recommendations were costed. And these are high-level estimates based on our, our understanding of the project scope at this time, so. These are summarized in this table and organized by soft and hard costs. Soft cost being planning and design studies, while the hard costs are physical construction. Total estimated cost to implement this plan, we estimated approximately thirty-three point five million. And we've forecasted for the first ten years, so. This table here shows years one to five, focuses on plans and strategies for the first couple of years, followed by implementation in phases of the waterfront promenade. Across the bottom of this slide, you can see the total estimated cost per year. And then this table is for years six to ten, these improvements focus primarily on developing a berm into a waterfront park. Now, the remaining sorry, now for the remaining projects that aren't forecasted on years one to ten, there's approximately ten point five million dollars in, in, in work to be done. And these are projects that we feel can likely wait until after ten years, and they, they don't, they're not immediate need, some of these have to apply to areas that all, the waterfront's already in an excellent condition, so there, there's not necessarily improvements that need to be done. These recommendations also apply to the mixed-use development areas that would be implemented as part of the secondary plan. And, and also, some of these would apply to addressing right raising, rising water levels as a result of climate change, but the feeling is that those don't need to be addressed in the next ten years, but obviously need to be addressed in the future. So in summary, this plan, of course, was developed with community input at every stage of the project. We have thirty-nine recommendations to implement over ten years, or ten plus years. Total cost, thirty-three point five million, which works out to about two point nine million per year for the first ten years. And again, more community engagement, detailed design is required as per the implementation process to, to confirm the scope and the, the costing of these recommendations. And finally, a council and consultation with municipal staff will determine if, when, and how initiatives are implemented. So thank you very much, and of course, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Okay, comments or questions from council? Go ahead, Council Crevets?
I just wanted to thank you, I was, I was happy to see the final draft as presented. I think that's what is wanted by the area, so thank you very much for that. So.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, Michael. One was, I, I like your idea of the steps down to the water. Except my concern is, we get a lot of heavy storms, and I know with the pier or the breakwater to the lighthouse, we have to limit when people can be out there, and that's why we put the really safe walls along it, et cetera, so. I, I don't know what our liability would be if we put steps down to the water. That, that was just something I know staff can be thinking about, that was one. The other one was, I know you have the naturalization being done, I think, in year six. And I, all I'm thinking of is that trees and those sorts of things need quite a bit of time to develop. So I was thinking that as, as many of the plantings as possible, we should do as soon as we can. And I know that there are groups, like the eco class, that are interested in helping with that, and the Port Stanley Village Association, and there are groups probably that we could get grants, et cetera, to help with the naturalization. So I would like to see it move just a little further forward, but then that's not your concern anyway. I really like the trees in the parking lots. I, I was in New Zealand, while in France, I saw a whole forest with parking lots in them, which was amazing. But in New Zealand, all their parking lots have borders of trees between the rows of cars. And it meant it was in the shade, it was very pleasant, and they would plant flowers along there as well. So I was very pleased to see the natural things that you were recommending for parking lots. So it's a great plan, I, I really do appreciate what you've finally come up with. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yeah, just a quick comment, it just, it's hard not to get excited when you read it and start to think about the possibilities, so yeah. Excellent job.
Council Row and then Mr. Perrin?
Thank you, just feel like I need to say something too, just being from there. Yes, no, thank you very much for the plan, I think it's a very good roadmap for where we want to get to, it will take time and effort, obviously, and it's a big number, so it's not going to happen overnight. But we, with this priority list and maybe some, a few tweaks perhaps, like the mayor suggests, or, or something. Hopefully, we can make it work and we can find some funding from other governments, other sources to make this work sooner than later, so thank you.
Mr. Perrin?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the, as far as implementation goes, that is for a, a future discussion of council and staff. But realizing that there is a desire to get the naturalization done, in all likelihood, that may have to come a little bit later, because there's a number of hard surfaces that are going to have to be constructed prior to, and if we go in and naturalize ahead of time, prior to those, you know, promenades around the exterior of the, of the headland or the berm area, then those won't all be compromised and destroyed. So there is going to have to be some work prior to that naturalization in order to accommodate the hardscaping and, and the actual walkways and things like that.
Yes, and I under, I understand that, I just thought year six seemed fair distance away. Considering how old I am. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much, Michael, we very much appreciate that, and there is a motion, so would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the presentation of Think Design Report Stanley Waterfront Master Plan be received for information, and that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Algen adopt this June twenty twenty-two Port Stanley Waterfront Master Plan.
Any questions or concerns? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, we're going to correspondents requiring action, and that's the vacancies on the BIA board. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Council Row, that report Port Stanley BIA Board of Management vacancies be received as information, and that council approve the appointment of Ryan Featherstone and Nikki Simmons to fill the two existing vacancies on the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management effective immediately as recommended by the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management.
You, call the vote, please?
Council, Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now we're going for the correspondence for information, there are three items there. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I have received quite a few letters and requesting about the beach volleyball nets. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I've had seven or eight calls, texts, emails, and one of these, I actually said we'll send a letter into council, so. I even had a gentleman, a small construction, well, construction company from Belmond area, said he'd, he'd put the posts in free. I said, fine, but, you know, that all has to be supervised by staff, but certainly seems to be a lot of interest. So that's what I told them, I just, if we get it here at the council table, see if there's any interest in reviving it or not, but seems that when GT's made the decision to stop it, you know, people weren't thinking volleyball, but they are now as the warmer weather comes, so. I'm glad we're here, so maybe we can discuss it.
Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to say? Sorry, Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Mayor Martin, I have nothing to add, as council is aware, staff tabled a report about three weeks ago in regards to this topic here. Staff is happy to receive direction from council if council wishes to reconsider.
Is there a desire for council to reconsider? I, I know Mr. Brooks had originally said that they would put in two if we wanted it, not the large number that GT's had, but two, and it was just, you know, first come, first served. Bring, I would assume they'd have to bring their own beach volleyball, we'd provide the nets and the posts, but Deputy Mayor Marks?
Majority of the ones that talked to me said if we could put the posts in, they'd do the rest, and they even suggested that they bring their own nets. That way, they won't be vandalized, et cetera, so. I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, you know, I reconsider it, a couple of posts, I don't think would be too enormous task to do, but I would certainly let, want staff's suggestions where and how and all that stuff, but I've heard a lot of people that they want it.
Yes, I have as well, I've received a lot of emails and such that have said, you know, please, we want them. What is the rest of, do you want to reconsider this? Obviously, we'd need a two-thirds majority vote to reconsider it. Council Row?
At two-thirds, take into account how you voted the previous time?
Yeah, if you, well, those who voted not to do it the previous time, two-thirds of them would have to agree to have it brought forward, I believe.
So I voted to do it, so I cannot be part of the two-thirds that turned it down.
Is that correct, Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Madam Mayor, off the top of my head, I believe that was received for information, not necessarily a negative vote against, against it.
Okay, so that we could reconsider it if we wish, then?
Yes, that's my interpretation, I'm just looking back at the minutes right now.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson's looking for the motion as well. Council Fair?
I thought a reconsideration only required more than fifty percent.
No, it's two-thirds.
So.
I thought, well, maybe it is fifty now, you're right, it used to be two-thirds. You're right. Mrs. Wilson? I'm sorry, Mrs. Wilson has the motion?
Madam Mayor, through you and the rest of council, the motion on May the ninth was moved by Council Win, seconded by Council Crevets, that report ICS twelve twenty-two re-beach volleyball courts be received for information, and Council Row was a nay.
Okay, so it was just received for information. Mr. Shipway, you had something you wanted to say?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I was just going to agree with Council Fair's interpretation of the reconsideration, I believe is correct, it was amended to the fifty percent, I'm fairly certain.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Marks then?
Due to the lobbying I've received, it sounds like you have, I'd, I'd be happy to move reconsideration. It seems.
I don't think we even have to reconsider, I think we can just make, like, they, it was just filing for information, so we, we can make a motion to install two or whatever tonight, if that's what is requ, is.
I'd fire. Support that.
You do want to make a motion?
I certainly would.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Madam Mayor, if I may respectfully make the recommendation, I, I think it would be prudent to basically move what was recommended in Mr. Brooks's report previously. There's a game plan for that, and it aligns with the professional look that council's attempting to design and, and put in place at the beach, I, I think that would be the best way forward if Mr. Brooks would agree with that.
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
I, I would agree, I would recommend that if, if council wishes to move forward, we install the nets as per the report that was taken to council a few weeks back.
Could you remind us just exactly what that was, Mr. Brooks?
So that council report outlined two volleyball courts with steel posts and nets. And the approximate value of the installation was ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and if we find that the nets become vandalized a great deal, then maybe we could follow what Mr. Deputy Mayor Marks said, that some of them are willing to supply their own nets. So if, we'll put up nets, though, your recommendation initially is to put in the posts and the nets to.
Correct.
And that location you would determine was whatever was the best location, or will that be in front of GTs?
The general location will be approximately in the location of the old volleyball nets that were operated by GTs.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to make that a motion.
Diane's trying to find the exact wording of the what was in it. Just basically two steel posts, net, volleyball courts. Just give Diane a moment to find the exact wording. Okay, we'll carry on with, and then we'll come back to that one, is, yes. Okay. Are we content with that?
Yes.
Leaving it and just we'll come back with that motion once Diane has had a chance to record it, but. So is there any other item under the correspondence for information that you've wished to speak on? If not, you have a motion concerning correspondence, items one and two, I guess?
So uh the mover is Deputy Mayor Marks and the seconder is Council Fair and I have, I have removed number three from the motion. So the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Fair, that correspondence items number one and number two be received for information and filed.
Call the vote.
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Previs?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fader?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. But we can go on to the next part, can we? And okay, and we'll let you continue to look. So we're moving on then to the Chief Administrative Officer's report on the Joint Compliance Audit Committee. Does anyone have any questions? This is an election item. Comes around every four years. No questions or concerns? We're not giving you much chance to write there, Mrs. Wilson. Go ahead and read the motion, please.
The motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that report CAO, CAO twenty twenty-two, the Joint Compliance Audit Committee be received for information and that staff be directed to bring forward a joint compliance audit committee bylaw for the twenty twenty-two municipal election in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act nineteen ninety-six as amended for council consideration.
You call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Previs?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we're going to the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services and looking at the blue box transition. So uh Mr. Brooks, do you want, have anything you want to add to your report while we give Mrs. Wilson a chance to write the other motion?
Uh no, Madam Mayor, I have nothing, nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on this? Council Row?
I do. Um thank you, Madam Mayor. So I was just wanting clarification on the July fifteenth twenty twenty-two expectations for this, and I know I had emailed Mr. Brooks earlier today, so there I guess I just feel like there might be a, a room for a twenty twenty-two update because there's some indication that in the AMO newsletters that municipalities are supposed to decide whether they're actually going to be a, a supplier of, of kind of like what we do today to the pros. Even though we don't know yet which pro would be for Central Algen, so just want to make sure we don't miss any deadlines is all.
Mr. Brooks, do you?
Uh through you, Madam Mayor. Uh July fifteenth was the date that was indicated by Ripra to uh for the municipality to respond back on which direction it wish, wishes to move forward with, whether uh we continue on in-house or move to um kind of give the keys to the uh pro. Um however, at this point, we don't know who the pro is. Uh that won't be decided until after July first of this year. So once we do find out who the pro is and who we're negotiating with and uh establish what the terms of the negotiation will be, we're not able to make a decision on what the future of the transition is going to look like between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-six. So uh the purpose of this report is to provide uh the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services and the CAO delegated authority to start uh that negotiation whenever that negotiation is ready to take place. Uh at this point, uh like I said, we don't know who the pro is and we don't know who we're going to be negotiating with. So um until that time, we, it, it's, it's difficult for staff and council to make a decision on what the future is going to look like.
Thank you, Mr. Ship, or go ahead, Mr. Brooks. Sorry, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
If memory serves and you're right, early on in the term uh some staff and councillors, we made the trip down on the train to a fairly large conference on this. I remember the, the speaker and the story then was that the, the announcement about the future blue box was imminent. Um that's what, two and a half years ago. It's got to be, it was early on in the term, was it not? I think, Mr. Perrin, you were there. So it seems, well, pandemic got in the way, but this hasn't been a rush project by any means.
No, and I, I feel very strongly that we've got to continue with at least the weekly pickup or we're going to end up seeing a whole lot of recycling going into our garbage. That concerns me a great deal. So whoever is going to be doing the pickup, I, I really want to see it continue because we, a lot of our people have, you know.
Have it for me.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Uh I just wanted to add uh um regardless of who is uh performing the uh collection of the blue boxes, uh the same level of service has to continue through uh till January first twenty twenty-six. That uh January first twenty twenty-six is a key date when the producers or the pros really um take full control of the collection system. So between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-six is considered the transition period where they have to maintain the same level of service that Central Algen currently provides. After twenty twenty-six, that level of service is open for change.
Thank you. Hope it doesn't change. Go ahead, Council Row.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, I just I just keep looking at this newsletter and it says decisions are being requested from municipal governments as to whether they wish to provide blue box collection services or not by July fifteen twenty twenty-two. So if we're saying that that date is flexible because we're not going to know who the pro is until July the first, that's okay, but what happens if that's not the case? And we don't declare one way or the other by July the fifteenth, what happens then? And, or does it even matter? I know, I, I get that the level of service would need to be the same, but if it's a future uh commitment, do we not truly need to decide by then?
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Uh through you, Madam Mayor. Staff would be hesitant to commit to something that we don't know what the parameters uh of which this system would be. So we really need to know what exactly it is we're looking to get into an agreement with. We, we want to take out as much risk moving forward as possible. So to, for staff to recommend moving in one direction or the other at this point with the, as little of information as we've been provided would be difficult and uh um staff is working closely with Ripra um to ensure that all deadlines are met and that we don't miss the vote on um any key decisions that are needed to be made.
And I am assuming that you and Mr. Shipway together will make a decision before the fifteenth. Go ahead, Mr. Shipway.
Uh Deputy Madam Mayor, just building on what Mr. Brooks said is that this process and transition to full producer responsibility has been widely criticized as like any of the other previous transitions in other jurisdictions. And the dates and requirements continue to change uh on a weekly basis. Mr. Brooks and his team are absolutely on top of them and a, as staff, we commit that information would be before council in advance of timelines. However, what Mr. Brooks is saying is, is appropriate is in this situation where there's uh such potentially large um financial and service level impacts, it's important that we provide council with uh as much information as possible before that decision is made because it could have decades worth of impacts on the municipality. So it continues to transition and I have full confidence in Mr. Brooks and his team is in, in meeting all the deadlines once we have that available information.
Council Row?
Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Shipway. I do have full confidence in, in you. I just needed to be able to be sure that we know exactly what the timeline is. And if it keeps moving, it keeps moving, but I, I totally understand and, and I uh I'm okay with delegating the two of you to be the spokesperson on our behalf.
Council Fair?
If, if we agree to go on and, and collect it, it would be a revenue generator for us at this point, depending on what kind of a deal they made with us, but it, it has some potential to generate some decent revenue, does it not?
Mr. Brooks?
Uh through you, Madam Mayor, Counselor Fair, I would suggest that it provides very little opportunity for additional revenue. Um and in fact, if the municipality isn't careful on which direction that we do choose to move forward with, it could end up costing the municipality more money than it would um than we would ever have of generating revenue.
Yeah, because at, at present, we get paid for recycling materials. Surely, yeah, sure, go ahead, Council Fair.
Well, then I agree, uh continue cautious, let me I see what, what we can do, but I, I was hoping not gold mine, but I thought it might be better, uh I guess, I guess that's unrealistic expectation, but anyway, so yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Row uh uh but keep it in your capable hands.
Thank you. Would you like to read the motion for this specific one?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Council Row, that report ICS fifteen twenty-two blue box transition and negotiations with producer responsible organizations be received for information and that the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services and the CEO of Heart be delegated authority to negotiate agreements with the producer responsible organizations for the municipality of Central Algen to transition to the new blue box regulatory framework within the timelines identified in the Ontario Blue Box Regulation OREG three ninety-one twenty-one and that the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services and the CEO of Heart report back to council on the status of negotiations with producer responsible organizations in the first half of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Previs?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Do you have the other resolution ready? All right, so we'll give her a chance to read the other resolution that we discussed earlier.
I do have Deputy Mayor Marks as the mover. And she's going to second your one.
Is there someone who'd like to second that motion? You want to hear the motion first, or do you want to second it, somebody? You want to hear it?
I want to hear the motion, but. You're looking for a secondary.
Yeah, either, we're looking for a second, or you can second it now, or you can hear the motion and then second. It's your preference to hear the motion?
Yeah, I'm not a second.
Okay, go ahead and read the motion.
Draft motion reads, the council approved the installation of two professional beach volleyball courts on Main Beach to be installed with aluminum posts and hardware and a net at an approximate cost of nine thousand six hundred forty-two dollars exclusive of taxes. Further, that the option contemplates the volleyball courts being open public use with no administration of a booking system for said volleyball nets. And I based that on that report that Mr. Brooks prepared, ICS twelve twenty-two.
Thank you. So Deputy Mayor Marks has moved this. Is there a seconder?
So, so I can?
Yes, you can second. Anyone can. Yep. Go ahead, Council Row, a second?
Yeah, so it's moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Just a quick question maybe to Mr. Brooks, if I could. You know, I guess I kind of winced a little at the ninety-six hundred dollars, but you mentioned aluminum, I, I was expect the life expectancy of them would be uh quite a long time, which would make me feel better if you'd agree with me.
Yeah, yes, I would, I would agree. The aluminum poles, uh we would expect a, a longer life out of and uh should be harder to vandalize. So we would, uh staff would recommend the aluminum posts if council chooses to go forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Just pleased to hear that and I'd look then at the, this is more of an, an investment. Really, yeah, it's a it is a significant cost, I recognize that, but I think it's something the public have been used to having. There is an expectation, I, so knowing that this will last a long time, I feel a little easier, so I still support it.
Mr. Brooks, will those posts remain in place, or do you have to remove them for the winter?
My expectation is that they would stay in place year round.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Previs?
Uh my concern was um why are we deciding to put it in front of one business? Perhaps Mackey's would like to set two and we could put two or three on Little Beach. I, I, I don't agree with the, the process on how this is being handled. We had discussed.
Maybe it shouldn't be in front of any business and just be between Mackey's and GTs.
We had, we had discussion of this once before and it was determined that nobody was going to foster this program and run the volleyball nets. I, I personally have not received one correspondence in regards to this, so that's why my question.
I, I certainly have, yeah. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'm only bringing this up in favor of this symbol because of the people who've called and no one has said they want it on the beach. They haven't said where they want it, so if someone wanted to move it, you know, I'm not fussy where they put it. I'm just saying it seems to be a demand or a sincere wish that we put some um posts back up. I'm not stuck up where it is.
No, and we certainly couldn't put it in front of Mackey's because they own the beach in front of there anyway. Mr. Brooks, is, would there be, would it be logical to put it between? You know, where, not far from where the blue flag area is, or?
Uh often, my recommendation would be to put them where they were pr, prior. Um south of GTs.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to ask Mrs. Wilson to call the vote, please.
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Previs?
Oh.
Council Cook?
No.
Council Fair?
Oh.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
That is a three-three tie.
Plus.
And the motion is lost.
Thank you. So we're moving on now to uh the uh Director of Financial Services Treasures reports the playground equipment for Union Street Park. Are there any questions on this one before we have the motion? If not, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Fair, that report DFS twenty-one twenty-two, we request for proposals twenty twenty-two fifteen design supply and installation of playground equipment, Union Street Park, we received as information. The council accepted proposal of Open Space Solutions Inc. For twenty twenty-two fifteen design supply and installation of playground equipment for Union Street Park in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars plus all applicable taxes.
No questions? Would you call the vote then, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Previs?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you, and the next one on the fitness equipment?
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Council. Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, report DFS twenty-two twenty-two, we request for proposals twenty-two fourteen, supply and installation of outdoor fitness equipment at Union Street Park, we received as information. And that council accept the proposal of New World Park Solutions, Inc. for twenty twenty-two fourteen, supply and installation of outdoor fitness equipment, Union Street Park in the amount of seventy thousand dollars plus all applicable taxes.
Would you call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs? Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we're coming to the, the third one is the annual municipal report highlights. Our Jan, is there anything you want to say about this before we, uh, vote on it? I think we've all, I assume we've all read it.
Um, I would welcome any questions if you have, and I can answer them.
Okay, I thought it was very well done and it was very easy to, to read and to see what was, uh, what the highlights were, so I, I appreciated it. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Row?
You, Madam Mayor, I just think it's a wonderful report and it's well overdue, I guess, but it really, um, summarizes the year, I think, in a very good way. And has a lot of good information in it, so I urge everybody to read it. It's very good.
Yes. Any other comments? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Councillor Row, that twenty twenty-one annual municipality report highlights be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. All right, now Director of Fire Rescue Service, Fire Chief, the monthly alarm activity report. Chief Harmrod is on the call. Does anyone have any questions? He never gets a chance to speak at these meetings. No questions? Do you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Councillor Row, that report FS oh seven twenty-two, we monthly alarm activities report for May of twenty twenty-two, we receive for information.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the, uh, Director of Asset Management, yes, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Um, Madam Mayor, if I could, um, I wonder if we could ask the Fire Chief to, I understand on, uh, Sunday previous, they had the fireman's breakfast in Belmont, and I heard they fed nine hundred and fifty people. Did a very, very good job, was a great breakfast, so maybe pass on, congratulations. That's appropriate. Good time.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Marks, yes, the final numbers were over nine hundred, uh, at eight-thirty in the morning. I had heard they were lined up just about, uh, down to Belmont Road, waiting for to be fed. So it was a, an extremely good turnout. And I think it just goes to show that a lot of people are glad that, uh, we're moving a little bit past COVID and can get out and support the community. I fully expect a number of different events, uh, that are scheduled to be overwhelmingly successful this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I have heard a rumor that, uh, the fish fry may be back on for the Port Stanley once. Another.
Is that a, is that a factual rumor?
I have not heard officially. I have heard that there's some discussions going on about that one. I've, uh, get the official word, I will let council know.
Thank you.
Something to look forward to.
Go ahead, uh, you, you read the motion?
No.
You read the motion then, please.
Next motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report AMDS fifteen twenty-two, we May twenty twenty-two monthly building report, we receive for information.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the building report? Not, call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, the next one is, uh, um, the, um, bylaw report. For all the different aspects of our bylaw enforcement, so do, uh, you have any questions before I have her read the motion? Go ahead, Councillor Fair.
I was just wondering about where it says other bylaws. It says there were four complaints, three are closed yet there's two under investigation. That's one question. And the other, I just wonder what kind of things are those in that other bylaw complaints?
Go ahead, Mr. Fair.
Uh, it could be zoning bylaw complaints, it could be, um, noise bylaw complaints, uh, any of council's regulatory bylaws.
For the two under investigation, those, I, I thought it was four in total.
If you, uh, refer to, uh, the notes at the bottom, you'll note that, uh, we tried to explain that, maybe we didn't do, uh, very good job at it, but under investigation and closed, some carryover from one month to another, so uh, that's the reason that they don't add up.
Okay, any other questions? If not, go ahead and read the motion.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report AMDS sixteen twenty-two, we May twenty twenty-two monthly bylaw report, we receive for information.
Call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we have the bylaws. Does anyone have any issue with any bylaws? Or are you okay with us taking them all together? Councillor Prebbs?
I'd like number five. Vote separately, please.
I thought you wouldn't.
Bylaw twenty-seven sixteen. Bylaw twenty-seven sixteen?
Yes. You want to take the others together first and then do that one?
So I will remove twenty-six, twenty-seven sixteen?
Okay.
Motion, first motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws twenty-seven eleven, twenty-seven thirteen, twenty-seven fourteen, and twenty-seven fifteen be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries?
Thank you. Second one on those?
Yep, next motion on the bylaws, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Row, seconded by Councillor Fair, bylaws twenty-seven eleven, twenty-seven thirteen, twenty-seven fourteen, and twenty-seven fifteen, we read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you, call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the other motion for. We need a mover and a seconder for bylaw twenty-seven sixteen. Councillor Fair? Councillor Prebbs?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Councillor Prebbs, that bylaw twenty-seven sixteen be read a first and a second time.
Thank you, would you call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Oh.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Oh. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries? And I will need to read a second.
We need a mover and a seconder for the third reading. Deputy Mayor Marks? Councillor Row?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Councillor Row, that bylaw twenty-seven sixteen be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote? I'm sorry.
Just to state, just, um, want to make you know that the way I'm voting, no, because I'm still not in full agreement with, uh, two severances being taken off of one property, so just want that reported. Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead and call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Oh.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Okay, and our public notice is just about the South Elline and notice of our intention to adopt water and wastewater capital works, um, with specific, uh, specific connection rate bylaw. Any other new business? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I've had a number of calls turtles. Turtles trying to get from one side of the road to the other. It, uh, uh, I, I think it would be, uh, way it's been explained to me, we could assist with some signage. This involves the County Velgon roads and, and some Central Elgon roads. Um, I believe it was Colleen Burns, who helps a lot of the wildlife that are injured. She was the first to call me. And to just certain spots, if we put some signage up, maybe it'd be a reminder to people to kind of look out for them. Uh, I'm, I think it's fairly low cost, I'm assuming. Be a few posts and some signs made up. I don't know if we're too late for this year, but it's, it would be some similar to, I guess, to our deer crossing signs. So I, I'd be in favor, it likes me to investigate it. We'll have to bring it up with the Elton County Council and ask them to, you know, get on side with it, but I can't see any harm in it, so I thought I would, I promise I'd bring it up for discussion.
It has been brought, um, forward as well, and I recommended, and, and Mr. Shipway did, that it go to the Environment Committee so that they can then bring us back a recommendation. And Betsy McClure has already provided the Environment Committee with what the signs would look like, and they will investigate various locations, because I have several times over the years, uh, Julie Berry has contacted me, the people uh, at the corner of, um, Fairview and, and Fruit Ridge, that those are areas, and I've certainly seen it on Sparta Line in the Village of Union. I've seen lots of snapping turtles cranged across the road there between, um, the two ravines.
Truman Line is.
Yep. When it's time to lay eggs, they cross the roads. And it, you know, we, we don't want to be endangering them. So it is going to the Environment Committee. That's on Friday, and they will be considering that and bringing back a recommendation to our next meeting. Any other new business? If not, then a motion to move into close, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Councillor Fair, that council proceed into closed session at eight oh two PM in order to address a matter pertaining to a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality of Elgin.
Thank you, call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries?
Yes, so we'll give Mr. Perrin a chance to take us offline and this is Wilson and.
Yeah.
Are we live?
Yep.
All right, thank you. We are back in open session now. Um, would you read the motion? Is there anything from the, a motion from the closed session item?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Councillor Row, that confidential items to the state's education, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
Thank you. Call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And, uh, confirmatory bylaw motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Councillor Fair, that bylaw twenty-seven twelve be read a first
Call the vote?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs? Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution carries?
And the final one on that motion?
Motion reads, moved by Councillor Row, seconded by Councillor Fair, that bylaw twenty-seven, we twenty-seven twelve, we read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Prebbs?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And our final motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, June the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two,